Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna go ahead and call the first meeting we have tonight to order. And this is a public hearing. City of Lamarck will conduct a public hearing to allow public comment on its Texas Community Development Block Grant Program project that provided water system improvements. Contract number 721-7250. The intent of the public hearing is to review program performance and receive public comments. Of course, it's held today, January thirteenth at 6:00 PM, Lamarck City Hall Council Chambers. There's been a review of the Texas CDBG contract, 721-7250, by staff. Item two, contract performance statement revisions have been reviewed by staff. Number three, our citizens' views, questions, and comments. Are there any? Going once, twice, three times. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. With that, I'll entertain a motion for a adjournment of the public hearing.
I second.
All in favor? Thank you. Moving on to our workshop agenda, if counsel, with your permission, we have Mr. Tristan here with us tonight, and he's needing to go ahead and receive his proclamation so he can take his leave. He and his mom are here, so if you don't mind, I'll do that first, and then we'll go into the workshop agenda. I've already read this into the record back in November. Tristan was a neighbor with us, and she is a resident of the county, not only of the state of Texas, but Washington DC, and many other venues for epilepsy awareness. So we'll cut right to the chase and say now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council, by virtue of our authority vested about the city of Lamarck, Texas, we recognize and proclaiming among the members, National Epilepsy Awareness Month. The city of Lamarck in the honor of all citizens, businesses, and professional bodies to actively support and help spread awareness so that people with epilepsy can have access to healthcare and access to normal life. In testimony where I witness my hand and the seal of the city of Lamarck, this the eleventh day of November 2019, I'll be the president. Congratulations. Moving on to the City of Lamarck City Council Workshop Agenda of January thirteenth, 2020. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It's obvious, calling the role that everyone is present. And if you'll please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance. Father, with bowed heads and humble hearts, we come before you, and you ask your blessing upon this meeting as we do the business of the city. Father, I thank you for touching my wife's body the last three days. God, I speak blessings over each person under the sound of my voice and their extended families, and ask that you will bless them in the way they need it the most and meet them at their point of need. Now bless our time together, Father, and we give you praise, honor, and glory. In Jesus' name, all who agree and believe, say amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. For those of you who don't know, my wife, I rushed her to the hospital about 1:00 AM on Sunday morning. She had a heart attack. And so I've been at the hospital for about thirty-six, forty-eight hours with about two hours sleep. So I would ask that my counsel keep the conversation to a minimum, not because of the football game, but because I wanna go home. Got that, Robert?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, item four, citizens' participation limited to three minutes per person, comments from the public. At this time, any person with city-related business who has signed up may speak to counsel on a specific agenda item limited to three minutes. In compliance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed, and personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. Before I call the first person, I'd like to say that my wife is doing great and may get to come home tomorrow. Our first speaker this evening is Ms. Geraldine Sam.
Good evening, mayor and counsel. I'm coming before you because my phone has been buzzing off the wall concerning discrimination in the fire department, and I just wanna make sure that that's not occurring. We only have one black female firefighter, and I was told that she is being harassed daily. She's being discriminated against, and that's not sounding good with my heart. And I received, I mean, several phone calls from the community, and they asked me to ask, I know that Tink can't say nothing, y'all can't say anything, but I just wanted to bring it forth that if this is happening, we can't allow it. And if she's getting all these write-ups, after a while, she won't be able to get a job nowhere. I mean, because she's a, well, I can't say all of what she was, but I'm just saying that she's a good person. She grew up in Lamarck. We knew the family, and we just don't want it happening in Lamarck. We're saying that we're a changed city. We're a city that's doing big things and wonderful things, and that's not one of the things that we want happening, or we want to be shown, our city as, as the only black female firefighter being discriminated against at any point, or any employee being discriminated against, but certainly not her. And so I'm coming today as a voice of the different people that have called me, and there's been quite a few. I don't know how true it is. I don't know if it's happening or not, but if it is happening, we're gonna ask that it stop. We're gonna ask that it cease at this moment, tonight, or whenever. It just can't happen in our city. That's not the way our city has been working and running lately. We've been a cohesive city. We've been working together. And I would hate for that to be one of the tarnishing things in our community that the only black female firefighter may lose her job, may, you know, was discriminated against in our fire department. You know, we can't have that. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We'll have Mr. Jackson look at that for you, Ms. Sam, and get back to you. Next speaker is Maria Garza. If you'll state your name and address, please, ma'am.
Maria Garza, 923 Kenneth. And I feel embarrassed to have to come again. I have heard rumors. I know a lot of people. We've lived in Lamarck over fifty years. And they are telling me, and my husband, that we are racist because we are arguing with our neighbor that has an illegal garage and junkyard and a nine-foot fence over the east end. So we are racist because we are arguing about that. Like my husband and I were talking, if there were Mexicans that moved over there, this would have been taken care of a month ago. And I would have been voicing for them to get out of there. Our property value has gone down. Our taxes have gone down, which is great. But if we wanna sell and move out of Lamarck, which we're probably gonna have to do, I've had so many people not help me. Our city councilman, I won't say the name, told us, I can get rid of the garage, but no, there's too much going on. You know, in other words, we're racist, and it's not gonna stop with getting rid of the garage. So, yes, sir. So anyway, the person that is spreading this rumor and showing a video of us arguing with this neighbor has passed it all over town. It has even gone to somebody in our church that showed us and said, we know you're not racist, but this video is terrible. I said, well, you're only hearing one side of us calling names, which we have never done before or since. But when you're confronted with someone telling you, I hope you die, I'm gonna send somebody to take care of you, the police aren't gonna help you, because I know somebody that works for the city, and they're protecting me. So what do we do? What can we do? Everybody passes the buck. Nobody wants to deal with it. I think the person that's supposed to be in charge, the last rumor I heard, that went by, and there's nothing going on. There's no garage. So I think somebody above this person who's not doing their job is in cahoots with this person and discriminating against one neighbor, against another, because you're not supposed to do that. I worked in the medical field over thirty years. I treated everyone the same, old, rich, whatever race. I never treated anybody or took sides. So I need somebody, without letting this person know, go by and check, because I've taken pictures to this person, and they were thrown in my face and told, do not take any more pictures, which were very incriminating, tires off, hoods up, cars in the street. I have pictures on my phone that they're blocking our driveway because there's no room in their driveway. The other day, well, anyway, I just need somebody else to go check this out, please.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Next speaker is Ms. Linda White.
My name is Linda White. I live at 222 Nan Lee in Lamarck. I've spoke to, I'm a state, ex-state employee. We were taught to go through your chains of commandments in order to get things done. I have done this, trying to get grass cut around my house. I got pictures here, which I'm gonna be leaving this with you guys, where you put the deal over your water for when they come and check your water. My neighbor next door, well, there was a house there next door. She towed a house down. So now I got this big hole here. I'm gonna give y'all the pictures. You can take them around. You can see all the water that when they came and digged the ditches about five or ten years ago. It make my, when it rains, it looked like a pool in my backyard. I have went to the city to try to get them to come do something. They came and dig halfway ditches. They don't wanna do what they're supposed to be doing, because they don't wanna take all the debris, move the trees and the fence, because people are not taking care of their property and stuff. So then they tell me they're gonna come and do something, not doing. I just went out there last month. I was told that you guys have hired some new engineers, that they're gonna look at all the stuff, and they told me that they're gonna go back and look when they first digged all these ditches and see was the water out there. The water gets so bad that the property in the back of my house, it belongs to you guys. The grass is high. I've had snakes, had to deal with snakes in my bedroom. I had to get up and kill a snake, because they don't wanna cut the grass. They don't wanna get rid of this water deal. The water get up so high that it comes out into the street. I used to have state farm insurance. They told me years ago, I've been living in my house for thirty, almost thirty years. They told me years ago, I didn't need no flood insurance, because in our area, it wasn't a flood area. Now it's, we having flood, water coming everywhere. So like I said, they told me that y'all hired these new engineers. They supposed to come back there to look and see if they, we gonna be a part of that, the area where I live at, is we gonna be a part of that, that they gonna engineer and do, just try to stop this water from coming, and it's in both areas. I got pictures showing where if they dig the ditches in the back of my house, like they supposed to, and do what they supposed to be doing, it's enough for the water to go out into other ditches and come on MLK. If, I got pictures showing that on MLK, like we in here, it rain today. It's pictures in there from today with the little weather that we have had.
I'll grant you an additional thirty seconds, if you need it.
Oh, the pictures that you see where there's no water there. It's like everybody, like the lady said, they wanna put the blame on somebody else, even like I told you, the deal where you come, they used to check the meters and stuff. My yard man taking, cut the grass of my neighbor on her property, just in case one of y'all come out there. You won't step in there. Snakes can go down in there. You could break your leg or whatever. I've been trying for the last six months to get somebody to come out there and put something on there. I've called. I've done my part. It's nothing I can do.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And Mr. Jackson has been taking notes, so I'm sure he'll be in touch. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Garza, did you wanna speak as well?
Hello, Mr. Mayor and councilmen, everybody here. My name is Enrique Garza, and I live on 923 Kenneth Street in Lamarck. I've been there for almost fifty years. Never had any problems with anybody. You can check my records. I don't even have a citation for speeding or anything. This neighbor moved in three years ago, and it has been nothing but problems. Ever since the first day he moved in, I went and I introduced myself to him, and I told him that he was welcome to the neighborhood. I told him about what day they pick up the trash, this, that, and all that. Anyway, the next day, he started causing me out, calling me names, calling me Mexican, good for nothing, this and that, and blah, blah, blah. And we started arguing back and forth. And somehow, he got a video that a city employee got and start spreading rumors around. And another city employee that works here told me that this person is spreading rumors about us being racist. We are not racist. We are all the same. We are all human beings. No matter what color you are, we are all the same. And I had tried that. I work a union car buyer for thirty years, and I never had any problems with anybody. You can check my records. So this person is spreading rumors that we are racist, and I demand, you know, for that person to apologize, because that person is, like I said, is wrong. Those pictures that my wife show you, those are my granddaughter, grandkids. That show you that we are not racist. Number one. Number two, we got an illegal garage across the street from my house. And like my wife say early, it's depreciating the value of my house. I spent half a day in the library looking for the zoning and all that, and the zoning for my area is residential. And this person has a garage. He's, right now, he got over ten cars in there. He opened the hood on one car and opened the hood on another one, and keep working on several cars at the same time, him and his kids. They're all working on cars. I got pictures. I got videos. I got audios. The chief of police got a package of all that, and nothing being done about it. It's gone into three years. Mr. Keith Bell, I was hoping that he will help me, but so far, no help.
Well, thank you, sir. I would just make one comment. You can tell by the diversity of our council and the way we work together that we're certainly not a racist council. And I would also say that since you brought up Mr. Bell's name into this, I'm gonna allow him to respond briefly.
Go ahead.
Number one, Tink, would you speak with this couple?
Can you speak louder? I can hear you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Garza. Would you speak, Tink, with the Garzas? And find out which city employee is giving them this information, because I would think that that's a major violation of city policy. And I'll let you handle that. Secondly, I did say to you all that if there was an illegal garage being ran by your neighbor, we as a city will shut it down. I did say that to you, and that has been my promise. That will be my promise. Here's the problem. Kathleen Van Steveren, who is our code enforcement, let's run down the list so that we can get done with this. Kathleen Van Steveren, who is our code enforcement supervisor, has told me there is no evidence of an illegal garage. Now, I didn't believe her. I went to Chief Jackson. I brought Chief Jackson out to y'all's house. Y'all remember that? Chief Jackson, yeah, yeah, I was out there with your wife and Chief Jackson. Well, first of all, I was out there with Kathleen.
You went to my house yourself.
I sat in your house. I went with Kathleen to your house. Yes, I did. We stood outside, Kathleen and I. She can come up and testify to that. I went with Chief Jackson. Chief Jackson and I stood outside your house. I didn't stop there. I went with the former city manager, Carol Butler. Carol Butler and I sat outside your house. We discussed your neighbor at length for over an hour in front of your house, and you didn't even know what she did, your wife did. I did above and beyond my duty as a council member. I have had three people tell me there is no illegal garage being ran in your neighbor's house. I am not God. I'm not Jesus. I'm a council member. The only thing I can do is go to Kathleen, the chief, and to the city manager. I've done that.
I tried to make appointments with him, and I cannot get it.
You did not sit down in my office with me? Yes, you did. You and your wife and I sat in the council chamber for an hour and talked about this.
I didn't. I didn't. She did.
Oh, you and another lady?
You were going to Austin.
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and put a stop to this now, and we'll try to deal with it.
No, I'd like to say something else. I've been trying to get an appointment with him, and I don't get no response. Why? I got videos, and I got audios, and I can show people, anybody that is an illegal garage running in there. And Chief Jackson got it in his, in a package that my neighbor sent him.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna have our attorney.
That's fine. That's fine.
Sir, yeah, if you don't mind, we appreciate the information, but under state law, they're limited on what they can respond back to. But under state law, they're limited on what they can respond back to.
I thank you very much.
Have to deal with this at another time. Thank you.
I thank you very much and I hope you.
Item five is our consent uh agenda workshop. Mr. Jackson?
Mayor, council, item five A is discussion related to adopting resolution R twenty twenty dash zero 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 one, which is calling for the general election to be held on May second, twenty twenty to elect one council member for District B and one council member for District D each for a three-year term. Any questions or comments about that? Item B, um after some further review of that item today, we're gonna pull that item off of the agenda for the next meeting. Uh, we still need to do a little bit more work on that and I don't wanna bring that to you until it is absolutely and fully totally prepared. So we're gonna pull item B off of the agenda for tonight. Item C, discussion related to adopting ordinance number O dash twenty twenty dash zero 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 one. Amendment chapter twenty-three, section twenty-three dash one, special expenses for issuance and service of warrants in certain cases of the code of ordinances to collect a fine. Doctor seek twenty-five dollars for defense under section thirty-eight point ten of the penal code or section five forty-three point zero zero nine of the transportation code. Any questions or comments on that? Just to clarify real quick, this is not a new thing, this is something you guys already passed. There was a law passed this year that changed it, the, the, the nomenclature, from a fee to a fine. So we have to adopt that to be in, in agreeable state law.
So we're not adding any new fees?
No, sir, we're not adding any new fees or fines, it's just a change of nomenclature. Any other questions or comments on that? Item number, and that will be the first reading on that one. Item number D, discussion relating to approve a final plot of Lamarck three addition being a subdivision establishing commercially restricted Reserve A containing one point two seven five acres. Showing part of block fifty-one, Division K of the Cook and Stewart subdivision. John D Moore survey, out check number one fifty, City of Lamarck, Allison County, Texas. Sixth Avenue and Prune Street Development Services Coordinator brought that to us. Any questions or comments on that?
I have some comments on it. I, 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 I have heartburn about this in particular, not because I think there's anything. Obviously, everything was followed to the letter in terms of applying for a plaid and, and everything is A okay. I have some heartburn about the building of a new Dollar General. These, there's a lot of data out there that revolves around the potential negative long-term economic impacts of these small box discount stores. Um, and basically, just to break it down. I feel like, you know, in twenty nineteen, we as a council put together our overall goals for the city. Chief among them being obtaining, procuring a large grocery store retailer. And there's enough evidence out there from other civi- cities and other studies, other think tanks that the presence of, of the, the proliferation of these types of stores negatively impact a city's ability to attract a big grocery store retailer. Now, I'm not saying in, in any way that I think Dollar General or, you know, any of these are bad. I don't think a dollar store is a bad business and I think that they actually serve a pretty good purpose in a lot of places. Unfortunately, I'm, I'm just, I've got heartburn about does this serve our bigger, long-term vision about what we're trying to bring into Lamarck? Which, you know, many of our citizens have said repeatedly and we have all, were in agreement that it's a big grocery store, not not Dollar Generals. And, you know, unfortunately, the um development trend for this, for this industry is to, you know, start in an area and then begin to bring more and more of them within a really small radius. Uh, which even more adversely affects our ability to attract a good retailer. So, those are just my thoughts, those are my comments about it. I don't really know, I mean, obviously, like I said, everything's been followed to the letter. There's, we don't have an ordinance against this by any means now and so I'm not really quite sure. I just wanted to put it out there that that's the heartburn I'm facing right now.
Mayor, just, just to follow up on this a little bit, Councilwoman McCullough and I talked about this quite a bit today. Um, and I, I would say I have to agree with her thinking on this. I mean, you know, we not, not only from the, the overarching view that it gives that, you know, we're building Dollar Generals on every corner. How is that gonna help us get the things that we're trying to get in here? But from a socioeconomic standpoint, these things have a big impact too. You start creating food deserts, you start creating opportunities for kids to have chips and sodas for dinner rather than green vegetables and, and something healthy to eat and I think that's something we need to look at. Um, and, and correct, they followed the letter of the law, there's nothing, we have no ordinance that stops this and we, I don't know, we want to stop it. But maybe what we need to look at here is, okay, this kind of stuff is gonna continue to proliferate until we go an extra step to get that big store here. Maybe it's time for the council to say, we're gonna get a big store in here if we have to incentivize it, whatever we have to do. We're gonna go shop and find what we want and we're gonna make whatever deal we have to make with them to get them here. Um, to get, because once we get them here, then the proliferation of these smaller things stops. And so maybe that's, maybe, I mean, maybe that's the way you get from point A to point B. It's saying, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna incentivize somebody to come in here and put in a, a grocery store and do what we want. It may be at a higher level of what we would be normally comfortable with doing, but to make sure that we get that for our citizens. We really make that a focal point and, and just attack it.
I think uh I think what you say is right and that's something that I know EDC has worked on before or are still working on. Uh, maybe it needs some extra effort. But we get into a slippery slope if we're going to try to define, you know, what businesses people want to open, that, that's a very dangerous thing. You know, how to change that. I for one, use a Dollar General, I use the one over at the old outlet malls, you know. Uh, especially when it's around different theme times of the year to buy your decorations and, you know, plates and whatever. Uh, but also uh some of the cleaning supplies and everything are greatly discounted there rather than the other stores. There is a place for that business. They're all on them all over now, they kinda tend to take themselves, uh, you know, they're not gonna compete, you know, one right next to each other. But I'm, I'm leery about trying to limit uh an individual's right to operate their business. I think we need to incentivize and go in that direction, like Mr. Jackson's saying, rather than try to limit something. I get what you're saying.
Yeah, and I mean, I, I certainly, like I said, I, I think there is a place for the business model of a Dollar General. It's just that there's enough, if you, if you dig into the research that's out there and the data that it attracts, that, you know, they, they tend to target low-income areas, they tend to target populations that are low-income and they actually do tend, once they've, you know, established in an area, the long-term trend is there does end up being multiples within like a square mile radius. And it does, it does show, it does bear out that it ousts the opportunities for local businesses to proliferate and the local businesses that I think we would all agree are the kinds that we want and are indeed the kind we've identified that we want. I'm not saying, and I agree, I mean, we are a capitalist society. I don't, I'm not out there trying to say that it's now the business of Lamarck to decide who gets to have a business and who doesn't. Just saying, this, being in my district, it's the concerns I have for, for my, for my demographic.
Well, I, I, I will say this, Dollar Generals, I see, uh, whether it's Dollar General or the Dollar Store, uh, I'll see them in major strip centers with a Coke Kroger next to them. Uh, I mean, it's, they're not a one-off thing, they're, they're prolific. And they're, they're mixed in with high-end developments too, just up there in Austin, Cedar Park area. Where you've got all the HEBs, the Academy in there, but here's a Dollar Store right there. I mean, so i- i- it's.
I, I had a question. Are the Dollar Generals, are they franchises or is this a corporation?
I, I don't know, I assume it's a franchise? Because they're all, they're all branded the same.
Most are franchised.
Yeah, I would say they're franchising.
Because, because Dollar General has a, has a larger, different type of a store, right? It's a, it's a mini mart uh concept.
Compared to a Dollar Tree or a supermarket.
Right, compared to the, the, the smaller store that Casey was referring to. They have one uh that, that has more of a, a, a grocery perishable item uh style offering.
There's, there was a merger uh between the two biggest, um, it was, what is it? It was a Dollar General and Family Dollar, I think, or Dollar Tree. Now I can't, now I can't find it, they merged. And so now there's, you know, there's over twenty-five thousand stores worldwide and there was a trial rolled out last year. I think it's called like Fresh For You or something that was in response to some of the blowback from communities saying, hey, you target our, our most poor citizens and you set up all over and then you just reinforce these food deserts that no one can break out of. Their response was to do um a renovation of a thousand stores to try and bring in a more green, like a grocery stores tile, fresh produce area. I have no idea if that's one of these stores, I, you know, uh, that would make a difference to me, but.
As far as I know, it's not.
I do know that it's a very small percentage of the overall stores that are that way.
Do you know? Well, I don't.
I believe it's their regular format.
Somebody in permitting would know.
I think this is their regular format, but they haven't told us what they will carry, it's, it's the plat. You know, I just wanna add here, Mary, you know, I, I, we don't wanna see it too far off the agenda item because the agenda item is the plat, for this approval of the plat. I think we've heard enough in here that I think maybe at the next council meeting, we need an agenda item to talk about. What we're ready to do as a city to incentivize somebody enough to move forward to get what we want here. Because what we've done to this point is not working, so maybe we need to do something else.
And I want to be clear that like, you know, like I said, I, I, I did some mapping of the dollar stores we have and, and we're not already, we're not at this point already where there's a dollar store in every corner in that area of my district. It would be the first in its area. And so I would like to talk more about how do we make sure we put a barrier so that this type of pattern does not continue here and that we don't end up with nothing but dollar stores? And, because again, a dollar store serves a purpose and in an area where there's not a grocery store, unfortunately, they serve a pretty pivotal purpose, but we all know it's not the best option, so. The plat is fine. I would like to talk about the larger
Yeah.
impact on our city.
Well, add that to the next agenda.
Thank you.
Pretty obvious, everybody's ready to talk about that. Item number five E, discussion relating to approve the purchase of one Spartan four or mid-mounted fire pumper through HGAC buying the amount of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. This is the second truck, you guys already approved the first one. Uh, now we need to get the appeal in place for the second one so they can get started on building it. Item number F, discussion relating to approve purchase of five each complete life pack fifteen cardiac monitors through lease purchase agreement of five annual payments pending legal review, which has been completed and is filed in a financing agreement. Any questions or concerns?
I just wanted to know, was, these life packs weren't in our budget? Or is it, they were, okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the question's five G, discussion relating to approve the renewal of contract to advance data processing Inc. ADPI, a subsidiary of R one, RCM Inc. and previously known as Intermedics, commencing zero one fifteen twenty twenty through zero one fifteen twenty twenty-three for emergency medical service billing and collections. Any questions or comments on that? That's the contract that we have with, with previous Intermedics, which will be the new group now. Is what we use for our billing process. Wouldn't change the billing process, it's just a new contract. Questions or concerns? Item five H, discussion relating to award RFP number twenty dash zero one to Clark Condon and authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract for consulting services related to creation of Parks Master Plan for the City of Lamarck. Uh, quickly, we have two respondents to the Parks Master Plan RFP. Uh, staff reviewed them, Clark Condon came out as the higher score. Um, so the process would be for council to approve, uh, to approve Clark Condon and then we'll sit down with him and try to negotiate a contract, see if we can get him inside our budgeted amount to get started on the Parks Master Plan. Any questions or comments on that? Um, new business will skip because we gotta talk about that in regular session anyway, so that's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, council. We'll move to the City of Lamarck, uh, regular city council agenda. Uh, January thirteenth, twenty twenty, uh, calling this meeting to order. And obviously, uh, all of council is still president, present. Item three A, excellent employee customer service awards. One of my favorite things to do uh as a council and I'm sure we all agree on that. And tonight, we have some wonderful recipients and I'm gonna ask them to meet me out front. And that is Renisha Lee and Delicia Kingsbury from our utility billing customer.
Two and a half people meet you.
Yeah, I should've said Delicia and her son. Uh, City of Lamarck customer service policy requires excellence in customer service and places the burden of providing a positive interaction with citizens on our employees. We have an employee with us tonight that has been recognized by citizens, providing excellent customer service. I would like to read portion of an email from us. I just want to commend two of your awesome employees at the City of Lamarck, Delicia Kingsbury and Renisha Lee. They made both our moving in and moving out process super smooth and easy in regards to the water, trash, and sewer service, much easier than all the other companies we've dealt with in the past. Renisha was very pleasant on the phone today and emailed me to require paperwork immediately after we got off the phone. During our setup process back in April, Delicia was so helpful and fast in setting up our services and sending me all of the wasteman and my schedules and info. I was shocked at how easy it was compared to Louisiana. Go Tigers! It only took five minutes on the phone to get everything set up, was shocked. Such a breath of fresh air, knowing how smooth all of this was compared to our past experiences in the other place. Yet another reason why we love it here in Texas and love, all in caps, Lamarck. Please give these employees a two thumbs up from us and I thank, thank them for being so welcoming and helpful during our stressful and scary move to a new state where we knew nobody at that time. Louisiana has got some big competition in the southern hospitality area, arena because Texans have been so nice to us, especially the ones in Lamarck. Delicia and Renisha's hard work, positive attitude, and dedication to the City of Lamarck make them both invaluable members of this, our city team. It is with great pleasure that I present this customer service excellent award to Delicia Kingsbury and Renisha. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I believe next on the agenda, we have uh we've already done the epilepsy month, we have a proclamation for Martin Luther King Junior. I, I'm gonna come out front, but I'm gonna ask, since I haven't had but two hours sleep, that you would actually read this for me and we'll be down front together. So I'm gonna introduce Councilwoman Casey McCullough to do that. I will be rested up for the parade, Bill.
From the office of the mayor of the City of Lamarck, a proclamation. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Junior was the chief spokesman for nonviolent activism and civil rights movement, which successfully protested racial discrimination in federal and state law and led the United States Civil Rights Movement from the nineteen fifties and killed his assassination in nineteen sixty-eight. And whereas, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior, by his preaching, his example, and his leadership, helped to move us closer to the ideals on which America was founded. Dr. King's voice was truly prophetic that reached out over the chasms of hostility, prejudice, ignorance, and fear to touch the conscience of America. And whereas, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior challenged us to make real the promise of America as a land of freedom, equality, opportunity, and brotherhood. And whereas, there are thousands of parades, celebrations, marches, and other memorial activities each year, along with the day being a national holiday in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior and his outstanding preaching and leadership. And whereas, this year marks the seventh annual Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Parade that the Lamarck Alumni Association will host, which is scheduled for Monday, January twentieth, twenty twenty, beginning at ten AM at the Lamarck High School. Whereas, Nikisha Paul and the Lamarck Alumni Association have diligently coordinated and staged this parade. And now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council urge all citizens and businesses to join and hereby proclaim January twentieth. And now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council urge all citizens and businesses to join and hereby proclaim January twentieth, twenty twenty. As Seventh Annual Lamar Alumni Association's Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Parade Day. And encourage all citizens to join us in recognizing Lamar Alumni Association for their hard work. And their dedication to ensuring this parade to be such a special event. Testament where and testimony whereas, which is timed in the scale of the city of Lamar, which is thirteenth day of January twenty twenty. Bobby Hopkins.
I will.
No, thank you so much. I want to give a shout out to Mr. Nikisha Paul for doing the great work here. And uh he does a wonderful job and it's always my pleasure to just pay him that. Especially throwing the candy out, seeing the faces of the little kids. Really enjoyed communicating with you today. So thank you. Does that conclude the proclamation?
It does.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item four A and B, the minutes workshop, city council minutes of December sixteenth, twenty nineteen and a special city council minutes. Of December sixteenth, twenty nineteen. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion and a second, no discussion on uh. On minutes. If there are no additions or corrections, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Anyone wishing to pull anything off the consent agenda? We've already pulled item B. Hearing none? I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
I think for a second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Under new business, item six A discussion possible action regarding a proposed municipal complex. Mr. Jackson.
Mayor, council, so at the last meeting, I was asked to start to look uh into the possibility of of. Designing, putting together, coming up with some information for you guys related to a new municipal complex. Uh of course, this is, I mean, this is not something that could happen overnight, but we have already had one meeting with L M V. Um I had them in the week after the last council meeting. Uh had them sit down with uh everybody that would be involved. As far as making sure that we, if we laid out something to look at what the cost would be. Uh that we had some design input and making sure we would have adequate space, et cetera, et cetera. Um after an afternoon with them, like they had enough information to go back and try to put together a a a beginning concept. Uh we'll call it that. I don't know what else to call it right now. But it will be a a beginning concept where they could could attempt to get us a ballpark figure on what would what that would cost. Speaking with Robert at L M V, he uh is uh understands that that we need to get some answers fairly quickly to know. Where we're going to go from point A to point B. He's he promised to have me a. Theoretical floor plan and some estimated numbers by the next council meeting. I mean, it's going to take them a little bit of time to get it put together, obviously, but. He is uh he is going to have something to put together by the next council meeting. I'll have him here. Um and they'll have at least a floor plan later on. It wouldn't be a rendition or anything like that, but they would have a floor plan later on of what it could look like. Uh they have done in some other cities, they've done some buildings that are very similar to what was requested. Uh and so we'll 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 have something for you at the next meeting. That's as fast as I can get it for you. Right? That's a that's a big, that's a big. But he's got to be careful that he doesn't come in and miss something. It'll be off millions of dollars and then, you know, we start to figure out it's a different. Different story than what he gave up with. So they got to do their due diligence too, but he's working on it. We're we're moving forward to get you some information so you guys can decide. What you want to do.
When when you said uh you said that when he returns, he'll have, you you believe he'll have have enough to have a floor plan. And so I assumed that there was some input. Given to him uh to come up with that concept.
We had a, we had, we basically had a lunch, had the police department there, police support there, we had everybody there. We talked about needs in each.
Gotcha.
Each one of those. And so, yeah.
And that that was my concern. I wanted to make sure that every entity was there so that we can all even. Even administration, we can all kind of give our input on on what we feel that that new building would need, so.
And it's just not, you know, it's just going to be a start. You know, here's what we would need. And then if we're going to add to it or whatever, then of course, council can look at what they come up with and make decisions from there. But it would just be a. Here's your minimum footprint. Basically, here's what we think your footprint would be. Uh because obviously, I mean, this, you know, something like that would take a huge piece of land and there's not a lot of opportunities for that in town either. Uh so there's a whole lot of other stuff that would have to be looked at. We don't even know what the footprint would be right now to do something like this. So we had to get a footprint to figure out where to start.
Right.
But he'll have it at the next meeting.
Mr. Jackson, I would like to make a point here on this thing. The most to me, the most pressing. Uh item that we need is a police station above all else. I'm not so much in favor of grandiose municipal complexes for new digs for city hall and court and everything. It doesn't all have to be in one complex. It would be great if we can afford it and if we have the property. But I don't want to miss any opportunities that might afford us the ability to give a police station. That's more than double the size of what we have now because that is at least what these gentlemen need, women and and men. So I I don't want to miss something. I don't want to leave that off table. I want that as that focus. I know that this resolution was put on there as municipal complex, but I don't want that to overshadow what the true need is. And and that's that I'm going to stick to that.
And we're we're going to keep looking at every avenue all the way through. Again, when this all comes out, this may be a forty million dollar building. Citizens may say forget it and we may have to come some other.
But I will not go for raising taxes on these people for for that, not at all.
We'll keep working every avenue, but we will have some numbers on the request next month.
It sort of seems to me like we've the, you know, the. You know, keep uh Councilman Bell instigating this also was for us to just. Start to talk about our future, right? It's it's creating a master plan of sorts, right? I mean, and of course, it's taking a one big step. Quite faster than you would with a master plan into like, okay, well, if we were to have this kind of building of our dreams, what does that look like? And then how do we make things work fiscally and, you know, logistically that are smart? But um I I just want to put out there that I think that it shouldn't be seen in any way as. Boy, oh, boy, aren't we excited to build a new like rotunda or something? Like it's about. Ma- fitting municipal buildings, which are, you know, police department is and the court is and all that that fit our needs. And we've seen so much come before us over this past year. And since I've been a councilperson that was, okay, how do we make this building fit all these different needs? Okay, it's lacking here. It's lacking here. I'm really excited about us talking about that and. Seeing what what makes the most sense. And I'm really appreciative for how quickly you jumped on that. Thank you very much.
Well, quite hon- you know, quite honestly, one of the things that was going to be part of the budget process this year, I mean, you're supposed to have a capital improvement plan as part of your budget. And that's that's, I mean, that's basically what we're doing here is kind of getting out in front of a. Capital improvement plan. And we started the capital improvement plan this last year with infrastructure needs. And it's kind, so it's kind of jump starting going from from a phase one, phase two, phase three capital improvement plan from. We're kind of missing, we're going to end up skipping phase two. We're just going to go from phase one to a fallout. You know, we're we're going to address everything at once because we're going to have to because that's all we're going to be able to make the determination if we can afford it.
Yeah.
So that's what we'll, that's what we're, that's what we'll. We'll have numbers next month. We'll talk about how that would roll into a capital improvement plan and look at how we.
Yeah, yeah, because I I I've been here longer than than anybody up here. And and I've I've seen the repairs that we've put on buildings. And and I know what that does to the self-esteem of of the of a city. I I I understand that. And so I I'm just wondering why we can't dream. Let's dream. Let's let's put together a dream, a vision, and let's let the people decide. Do you want to live in a city that has a municipal complex that you can be proud of, that will attract other citizens? That will be efficient and that will be economically sound? Or do you want to continue to patch up what we have? We can do it either way. But what I smell is fear. That's what I smell, fear. I don't want to do this. I don't want to do that. We can't do this. We can't do that. Let's not do this. Let's not do that. And all I'm saying is let's put it before the people and let's dream one day, dream one day and see what happens. That's part of the this city's problem. We don't have dreams. We don't have visions. And I'm tired of it. And so I'm willing to put it before the people, whether it's just me or whether it's all five of us or whatever it may be. From this point moving forward, I'm going to dream and I'm going to put those dreams before the city, period, point blank, the end. So thank you, Tink. For what you've done. I would love to see a rendition of an entire complex. And I'd love to let the people decide. And if you want to have a rendition of a police station, then so be it as well. Don't care. Let them decide, but let them dream.
If I may interject, I appreciate your uh comments, all of you. Uh thank you, Mayor Protem, for bringing this up at the last meeting. Uh I'm willing to dream, but I'd like to fast track especially the police department and the court. You know, we talk about adding money, uh Mayor Protem, to buildings. Well, if let's say we were to move out of city hall. In a year. In order for that not to become a dilapidated building, we'd still have to put the money in it. Just fix it up to sell. So I think our two biggest needs, and this is just me speaking, are the police department and the court. And it took Santa Fe a couple of different election cycles. Uh for their voters to pass that, but they did. And I'm I'm going to, I'm going to dream with you on all three. But definitely I'm in favor of the police department and court because they're just. They're crushed over there. It's crazy. But I look forward to more discussion.
I I do too. Uh again, there's nothing wrong with a plan, a vision. We are, we are so afraid. We we're rejecting something before we even see it.
Who's rejecting though?
Uh this, uh there there are two people on this council that have said, one has said, I'm for a police station. Well, I've been for a police station too. I was the one that was down there during the tour. And I'm the one that came out and said, I'm going to fight for a police station if it's the last thing I do on this council. So I'm for that too. And Mayor, I I get you're saying that you're for a police station and a municipal court building. I respect that. All I asked Tink to do was put a plan together and show us what it would look like and how much it would cost. Before he can even do that, we're up here saying, well, I'm for that and I'm not for that. Can he put the plan together? Can we see how much it's going to cost? Can we see how mu- how how it looks? Can we put it in front of the 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 voters and let them see it at city council meetings before we decide what we want and what we don't want? That's all I'm saying. Let them put the plan together. It's not going to hurt. Let them put it out here. Let the citizens come in and see it and give us feedback and tell us what they want us to do.
If I may, Mayor Protem, correct the record. I did not say I did not want a new city complex. I said that the most urgent need. Was fast tracking the police station and the court. I too want to dream and I too want to see an entire city complex.
That's good to hear.
If you've been to Dickinson and walked in there, it's a beautiful complex and uh there's no reason a similar sized city cannot accomplish the same thing.
Appreciate that, Mayor. Appreciate the saying.
I have no fear of dreaming. My whole life has been about dreaming.
I appreciate you.
And I think all of us wouldn't be sitting here if we weren't uh dreamers and planners. So thank you for br- bringing it up.
Yes, sir.
Any any further discussion? Item B, uh discussion possible action regarding establishment of a city of Lamar teen court. This is uh put on the agenda by Councilman Lang. Mr. Jackson, would you like to address this?
Yeah, I'll start with this and Councilman Lang, I think, is going to help me with this. When I first started, this is one of the things that Councilman Lang came to me and talked to about. I think I think right now we're we're kind of at a juncture. This is probably something that. It it's time to get the ball rolling with this. If this is something we're going to try to do, we approved in the budget this year, the the advocacy position to be in the court. Uh and the Councilman came, you know, came back with this and we we talked about this a little bit. You know, we 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 started out with that youth advocate position. There was a fee, I think it was being assessed, and so there was some money to pay for it, but it only paid for it part time. And then council saw the utility of that position and said, well, let's go and fund it full time so we can try to help divert some of these kids. You know, maybe we can, maybe we can grab a hold of ten percent of it, whatever. If we can hold one of them, it pays for itself. If we can get one of them on the right track and off the wrong track by using that position, then um you know, that's something to do. Well, I've I've been part of a teen court before. Um they're pretty labor intensive, uh but they have some utility. And those of you that have that have seen it work before, you know, certain instances, certain things that happen, the kids get diverted to teen court rather than going through the regular regular process. Uh it's a whole thing. It involves them doing community service. They start out being the ones that are being tried. Um then roll up to being, you know, jury or prosecutor, you know, whatever. They they go through a whole process. Uh where they learn it, they learn about the legal process, one. It gives them something to do that diverts them from doing other things too. I mean, I think there is some utility in it. Uh we have not hired the youth advocate. Uh yeah, we've got a few applications, but one of the, one of my thoughts on this was, you know, this is a a great thing for that person to do. Um to to direct this and maybe if this is something that the city's interested in doing, is trying to to be a model city on a teen court deal. Maybe we need to roll elevate that position a little bit more and get somebody that's maybe got a criminal justice background or something in it. Where they can come in and make the same work and maybe it'll help the kids. Uh so we put it on here. Um Councilman Lang just didn't want it to get lost. I mean, you know, this is something he's been passionate about since I got here. And now that we got the the grants taken care of, now he's back on his other list, so. Uh but I think this, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of potential in this. I mean, there's a tremendous amount of potential to do some good with something like this, but we needed to to see what council thought about this.
Do we, do we have any other cities within the county or Harris County or nearby that are doing this?
Pearland.
Is there any? How long have they been doing this?
I want to say like um maybe eight years or so, if I'm reading correctly. And Houston also um has a very active teen court.
Have you had the chance or has anyone had the chance to talk to them and talk to who? Who? Tara, do you know about teen courts?
Anyone like me to speak?
I've got the judge here too.
Yeah, because the biggest thing that occurred to me was it seems like it takes a small but mighty team or maybe larger than a small team to make it really work.
During my tenure, we've had teen court twice, two programs over the years. So I'm familiar with how we set it up also. Friendswood had it for a period of time. Other cities have had the program. Uh it's usually has faded away from lack of participation. So I'm familiar with the program setting up, how we can run it, how to get the, you. Uh get participation or the cooperation from the school district usually to find participants, uh additional volunteers to participate in the program. And then you throw it out there to the juveniles that I have the class C misdemeanors that come before us. We give them that option. I'm certainly willing to work with y'all. We can give that program a try again. Uh with the new juvenile case managers will come on board soon. Certainly, we can uh have the individual reach out to the schools, try to look for participants. We'll work with the program. We'll have training sessions, which I've done in the past. Uh where you get the participants, you actually train them on what their roles would be from prosecutor to defense counsel to jurors. Uh and explain the whole program and sure, we'll give it a shot. We'll we'll be glad to try to start it up again, but we have, we have done it a couple of times in the past.
And just for the record, historically, defense counsel in teen court doesn't do much defending. They want them, they want, they want them doing, doing community service and they want them doing.
Right.
They don't do a whole lot of defending. Prosecutors do a good job. Defended attorneys kind of just sit there and look at it like.
And and the jurors take it very, very uh serious as well, you know, the the whole process, a good educational pro- process, we can get the. The uh the students to get involved in it and usually the starting point is through the school. So sure, I'll be glad to work with Councilman Lane and the rest of council and the city manager to see about starting the program and give it a shot.
Judge, you think with this youth, with this youth advocacy position there, I mean, actually having a person to spearhead it where before you didn't, I mean, it was all staff, is that going to help?
Prior, we, there was a. Uh two individuals came in, actually they had grants. I think it was through family service centers, if I recall correctly, some time back. That approached us and other cities, Tech City, there are other cities involved in the program. And so we had someone spearheading it. Certainly, we can, the person that can spearhead it this time with council's permission can be the uh juvenile case manager. And that's, I understand, one of the reasons y'all wanted to look at someone full time. So certainly that person can spearhead, start by reaching out to the school districts, I would suggest. To try to let them know we're thinking of forming this and see if there's interest, those that want to participate in the program and we can work on it.
So based on what you just said, I'm I'm going to guess when the grant ran out. So based on what you just said, I'm, I'm going to guess when the grant ran out and that person wasn't there anymore, that's what made it.
What really happened kind of at the same time, the participation faded. We had fewer and fewer individuals are interested in, in letting jurors of their peers decide their punishment. Cause what happens is a juvenile appears, enters a plea of guilty or no contest. So that's not the issue, guilt or innocence, it's what the punishment would be. And they're offered the, the, the opportunity to have their case deferred and dismissed, provided they're agreeing to submit their punishment to a juror of their peers, if you will, with your other, other juveniles.
So you're saying the lack of participation did not come from recruiting teens to sit as jurors, but for having offenders interested in wanting to even come to.
That's correct.
Oh, that's interesting.
And see the pool that we were, that we were utilized to partner with as far as having consistent for, for students entering the program would be Century Twenty One and JP Three down the street. And so I've, I've spoken to a couple of groups that, that are very youth centric in the area around the city that.
Are you talking that as a pool for the potential jurors?
No, just for participants in general. So JP Three, like this is where they go, if you're in the school district, you get in trouble. And also, you know, Century Twenty One, you have participants and also like the school district, if you get in trouble, that's your first course of action if our disman is concerned.
Is that Williams?
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Could we get a presentation from Pearland? On how theirs is working and, you know, so that we don't have to recreate the wheel?
The model that we're utilizing is, is, in my opinion, is very unique to the state of Texas as far as the models that I've seen around the state. The model that we're implementing would be more consistent with what they have in Colorado Springs, Colorado. It, it's predicated upon redemptive justice and not just, uh, going to the motions as far as, you know, kids just being able to participate. We're trying to, you know, just, um, teach them the areas of ways. You have businessmen involved. You have ministers involved, you have former criminals involved. It's more vast than most teen courts.
More community based.
Correct. More commu, community centric. So like, for example, if you get caught going to Walmart and stealing something, instead of, you know, you're getting in trouble, you have a board with a policeman, a worker that work at a retail store and somebody worked for the city and just, you see the consequences if you're stealing, you're actually taking food off the person's table that work at Walmart. And so you kind of see the gravity of your actions and not just regulate it to you just stealing or taking one item. So it, it's very vast.
But I do see that, again, that, I mean, like, I think that's great, but it is, that seems super labor intensive.
It's, you have, if you have a, correct. If you have a strong, I would agree, but I have seen a number of teen courts ran with just a strong set of volunteers and it can be done, but it's just finding the right volunteers.
So Councilman Lane, Mayor Councilman, if nothing else, I'm very familiar with the city attorney's office in Pearland. We've worked with them on some joint projects before. Maybe we could schedule a meeting at, at least with Councilman Lane and some of the people over there who are running the program so you could see some of the options and learn from that. There's also the potential for some inter local agreements. Maybe if we paired up with a couple of other cities, we could share that burden, especially if it's heavy on, on Pearland right now and we're looking at bringing a, a person in. And then just my last two cents, sometimes the participants in teen court end up city attorneys.
Mr. Jackson, I'd like to get a presentation for all the council from, from Pearland and I'd like it to include their judge that, that's using that program, their prosecutor and, uh, someone from their police department. Cause I've got questions all the way around about, you know, pitfalls that, you know, we may see or can avoid with this.
Because so, um, I first learned of this idea two years, four years ago at T M L from Harker Heights had a teen court, they gave a presentation. And so, um, you know, just studying the various models, I think what Colorado Springs has in place is more consistent with the issues that we have taking place within the city of Lamarck. I've conversed with, um, they're actually a nonprofit and I had the opportunity to converse with the chairman on a couple of different occasions and ask questions. So since we want to use them as a model, I would like to see if we could possibly have a Skype meeting or something along those lines where we could, um, talk to them directly, maybe over Skype or what have you and see, um, and address, um, council misstitch concerned in that manner.
Sure. Well, I mean, it seems like everybody's in favor of pursuing this farther.
Yeah.
I, I definitely support this. I support Chris in bringing it to us. Do we need an action item or is this discussion of direction?
I got everything I need.
All right. Thank you.
What was about this a little bit?
Thank you, Judge.
Anything else, Councilman?
No, sir. Thank you.
Item seven, appointments, discussion possible action regarding appointments and our reappointments to fill various positions of boards and commissions. Anyone have anything?
Yes, I am very happy to reappoint to the Board of Adjustments, Ms. Lillian Petty. Um, I think I saw her here. Lillian, can we clap for you?
Thank you. Thank you. And we'll, we'll have a motion on that in just a moment. I will have a second and a vote. I would like to establish a link between Keep Lamarck Beautiful and the cemetery board, of which I do have an appointment. Our ordinance says that a person cannot serve on two boards. However, I think this link is extremely important. So I would ask the council, uh, special dispensation and I discussed this with the attorney. Uh, in order to form that link, I'd like to appoint Alana Brown as, to the cemetery board. Ask special dispensation and a unanimous vote and of course, a second to do that. And then the attorney says, we can come back and amend that ordinance on a special case by case basis so we would ratify this decision.
So let me, let me ask this. But if we do it tonight, are we in violation of that ordinance?
Potentially, there's a, a challenge to the eligibility of the person to serve on the board. What you could do tonight is you could go ahead and approve the appointment contingent on an opinion from legal that the person is in fact eligible to serve. If it turns out they're not eligible, I can write an opinion on what needs to happen next as far as a change to the ordinance.
Then that would be my motion and.
A second.
And can we have a second on Ms. Petty?
A second.
All right. I actually do not have the tiers on my agenda.
I have the list.
Okay. Let me, let me, you want to go ahead and read the list?
Yeah, we have four positions on the terms board that need to be reappointed effective December thirty first of twenty nineteen. That's Cheryl Farrell, Kim Caberetta, Al Horcica and Rex Henley.
Wonderful. I'll make, do you want to say?
Sorry, Mayor, if I can also add, according to the creation ordinance, this is a little bit unusual, but the mayor appoints subject to council approval, the chairperson for the board. So the chairperson last time was Ernie Casmas. If you choose to reappoint them as the chair.
I'll make that motion our appointment as stated by the city manager's reading and the interim city attorney. Can I have a second on that?
Seven seconds.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Council. Alana Brown is extremely excited about doing that. That concludes our meeting tonight. Are there any requests and announcements? Yes, sir. We have some people sitting here in the audience. We did hear you about drainage and everything. And to me, your house is flooding and the streets and everything comes first when it comes to our infrastructure. We're in the business of the infrastructure and solving these issues, you know? Most people, Mr. Jackson put something out on Facebook and I don't know that everybody noticed, but this weekend, a lot of y'all didn't notice that your water pressure was low. And, and, and we had crews out and even our, our engineer was out there in the night in foul weather and we're at home and we're all nice and toasty and everything, but they're out there working, you know, to get these things resolved. And, and I want to make a big thank you to all of them, but with that, we spend money on these things and we'll continue to spend money on them. There's a lot more that we need on roads and everything, but we really do need that police station and that's where I'm at. But the main thing is we need this infrastructure and we hear you. Thank you.
Can I add something to that, Mayor?
Sure.
On the, the water pressure issue this, this weekend, uh, and Chase is here and I want to pat him on the back really big for all the hard work they did this weekend. That issue was caused by a facility that's not ours. It wasn't a city that was where the water comes in. It's where we take the water into the city. And Chase basically almost had his head underwater figuring out what it was and finally pulled out a big old huge blockage that they had in their delivery line.